Let's see. October 7. I'm sure we do.
He probably let us do it.
Well, we'll follow the meeting's order. Join us in the fight of allegiance. Fight allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comments?
After the conversation last time about parks and racks, I went back and went through the stuff that we had, and I just have a spreadsheet that Leah Howes said that she shared at the time I considered that. And that was in October of 2013. I haven't got all the minutes. I just asked Sandy to kind of track down the minutes from that meeting, and it wouldn't have been approved by the council until a later meeting. So I just wanted to share the spreadsheet because Leah shared that with the council members at the time because they were looking at costs and those sorts of things. So.
Yeah, what year was this?
October 17 of 2013, that spreadsheet would have been discussed at council meeting. And then the iterations of that agreement continued to be hammered out until the end of December. I can't remember what the date was that it was actually signed. So there should be some, I know that there are mutual or center commission meeting minutes. There should be data county supervisor minutes, and there are obviously city council meetings. No action here, just starting to gather some information to help with the conversations that you might have related to that.
Any other public comments? The only thing I, I had a lady from an insurance agency call me today wanting to know if we'd be interested in having her put a quote together for City Insurance. She got ahold of you. Well, she said she stopped in the office today or something, Sandy was, she knew she knows me. So she called me to see if. Should she have got ahold of us? I mean, I guess it doesn't matter if given the information.
No, I, I was just wondering, I mean, insurance sales and all kinds, is what I'm saying.
Well.
Which one is it? What kind of insurance is it?
EMC.
No, I, the type of insurance she was trying to sell.
Liability.
It's liability. That's what, to replace our item. But she said that the company that she works for does a lot of smaller towns under $25,000 and would be willing to look at ours and possibly do a presentation or whatever, just see if that was worth it or just.
Do you, do you want us to just review?
I just guess I was just gonna, I guess, see if the council was interested in us going moving forward and then with it or if that was something they'd want to look at doing and they just have you handle it, I guess.
Well, we can review what she has. Don't have like council information unless you want to.
Well, but she has to get all of our, what we have from us to look at.
From us, yeah.
Well, that's all of us. So that's all I got, I guess. I could just have her get ahold of you.
Okay. You don't, you know her name?
Alyssa Greenstreet.
Yeah, she came into the room.
She works for some company in Fair, Fairfield or Century or something. Approve, approve agenda. I'm gonna make one change. I'm gonna remove the closed session. I've never got a reply back from the individual if that's concerning as to how they want it done, so we can do it in open session, I guess, next meeting. So I'd like to remove the closed session. Move to approve the change. All in favor? New business. Approved resolution, appoint Harrison Morton Weber, Semple, Maxwell, PC as attorneys for the city of Bunfield. Move to approve. Any discussion? Does anybody want to know what it is? Has everybody seen it?
Yeah.
All right.
They've been done for years.
Scott?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Approved purchase of snow blade. Just got, you have two quotes there, one from Henderson truck and one from local snowman file man requesting to purchase a nine foot, two inch V plow for the front of the street's division's truck. And we were starting to get into the fleet stuff. Of course, you know, this year's a more heavy year for snow, but I just really didn't identify the need for a smaller blade. We got a couple, three blades right now, and two of them are really kind of big, where we need more maneuverability in different areas. So along with that, I mean, approve this night, we also are, do the, have a lot more snow pushing. We do have some major repairs we have to make on some other blades we have, so there will be some maintenance costs in the, on the A-frame and some other items. We did have a truck, we had a foreman's getting loaded here yesterday, too.
You say a V plow?
The poly V is Swiss, we're racing based, and blades can move different size.
It'll be either direction. I was gonna say, V plows are kind of an antique.
Yeah.
I'm using, I like them.
Well, they're great for busting drifts.
Well, but if you invert it the other way.
Right.
Get your trailers, you know?
Right.
So then my question, I mean, this is, because Snowman was pretty big on there, they didn't give a whole lot of information. I mean, this is after the happen, right?
Right. Yeah, and it's with the exception that if you go to Henderson, the quote there is just no install. Henderson's about the same price, but the installation was additional charge, so Western and Boss are all pretty close. Henderson goes with Western and Boss deals with theirs, but.
Which is?
Pretty much along the city, equally, you're stuck with the municipality discounts and the prices they can charge for this, which are pretty even. The biggest difference is labor and installation. Intrench state local.
Always got them.
Boss, though, isn't it?
What, what's the recommendation on that decision? Which company are you recommending?
Recommending Boss, yeah.
Recommending Boss.
Local. Yeah. We approve it tonight, and I have it here in three, four days.
You have just a bid from Snowman, Snowplow for $79.50. He's a local supplier.
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Earl?
Budget work session three.
Okay, tonight we're gonna do, well, five things. Actually, we're gonna do revenues for everything and utility expenditure budgets. The first thing that we will do is the revenues. If you look at the packets that are out on your desk, the one with the purple label on top is the revenues, and that's what we're gonna just be dealing with right now. You'll see that we have revenues broken out somewhat by department. In the, on page one, you can see all of the police total revenues that go around about halfway down the page. They totaled $35,750. What I think you can look at here is that there really is little change from what we were looking at in budgeting last year. If you look at the column, it says current budget, it's two over from the far right, says current budget, commit current budget to, to new budget. Revenues expenditure to date shows, that's seven months, right Brenda?
Yes.
Seven months of experience thus far. So if you want to compare the budgets to budgets, last year, this year, you just look at two over from, from the far right-hand column. We reduced the miscellaneous revenues to $1,000 mainly because we had a, an abnormal year in the current budget year, you can, or the year before, the 4,200, we budgeted $59.75, but we, to date, we've only got $368. So that's why we dropped it back down to 1,000, which is the same from the prior two budgets. Everything else is coming in right about as we have experienced in the past. I don't think that there's much that we're gonna see for deviation. Any comments about the police revenues? Okay, for fire revenues.
Where's the, that revenue, is that money in here for the?
For the, yeah, they're on the, it's on the capital for the 15.
You're, you're talking about the expenditure for the fund range?
No, the drug bust money that we brought in. Shouldn't it be under, is it in the, shouldn't it be in the police fund?
I thought that was a segregated account that, what? I thought that was a completely segregated account. What, what's the deal with the money, chief? Where do we, where do we report that money? Because it's not in any mark forms.
But I think.
It was to go into the general fund, but then to be earmarked later.
I'm not sure it can, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it needs to be earmarked for something we spent this year.
But I think it needs to stay in the police department's budget. I don't think it can go into the general fund. I don't think that's legal. That's something to look into.
We, we'll have to.
Because countywide, it's not, it's not legal. The money, if it's, if it's brought in by the police department, it's gotta stay in the police department.
This is the police department, the, the fund's still in the general fund, that's year zero one means general fund. This is the police department of the general fund.
All of our, all of our.
But I don't.
I understand it's under the general fund, but it's, it needs to remain in the police department function. If we put it in the general fund, it's just.
I, chief, or mayor, I understand what you're saying.
I'm just asking.
I, I think we have to put this in a segregated account that's not in the general fund. All of our other police revenues are general fund revenues.
But I'm not, I think that money has to be spent. I mean, it's part of their budget. It's spent back out through the police department.
I, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I don't, we can't use it to fix streets, is what I'm saying.
And that's why, that's why we said it'll be.
You know, segregated later, but I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not, we're getting it where it needs to go.
You, you can see that none of this is drug.
I just want to make sure we're not getting, at the wrong place.
All right. We have other drug money, too, set aside. Can we, chief?
Yeah, it, that's under miscellaneous expenses, I think, or.
You have it, you have a revenue and expenses?
No, not a revenue, just the line item that we.
No, I understand how you spend it. I'm trying about, where do you see? You don't know.
Does it come in miscellaneous revenues if that's how it goes out? Is that why that number was so weird this year?
Well, it doesn't go out like that.
No, it wasn't even close to that. Wasn't happening.
Well, well, I took a note on that, we'll, we'll come back with that. But this is, these are the normal revenues that we're talking about here, okay? The next grouping on page one is just typical revenues that we get for the fire department. You can see that there's no money for a grant reimbursement because there's, we, we actually will have a big grant that comes in this year, but it'll be spent this year. So what we're trying to do, and we haven't got confirmation of that because, as the chief reported at the last meeting, once the government shutdown gets closed, then we get the $249,000. But in the meantime, we're not reporting it as a, in our budget, we're not reporting it as, as a revenue either. But what'll happen is, is assumably when the government opens up again, we get the money to spend it. It all happened in this year, so it won't even show up in this budget, other than the fact that it was a revenue and expenditure in the year we completed. So realistically, what you're, you're getting to is just two revenue items, townships and invoices for fire services. Chief looked at these numbers and, and made his recommendation on these.
There's something that I know was debated the 11 years I was in the department. Every insurance policy you have, whether it's car, home, or what have you, automatically has a number they pay for a fire call. And we don't bill for that.
We bill what Jeff gives us to bill for.
And we bill this only hazmat?
No. I think he, I think he bills, like if it's fire call or whatever, they're doing it. They weren't, but they are.
Because, you know, like, if you, if you get a fire call in your house, they'll write out a check for $1,000, no question of that. And at that time.
He's going after all of those now.
Given a case-by-case basis.
You can, you can check with him, but, I mean, I, I remember a lot of discussion about that.
Three hundred and seven calls a year, that number ought to be a lot, a lot more than
Is, is the money coming in where the $6,500 is?
Well, it's still ain't enough. I mean, that, that might be where it's coming in, but that's.
I mean, we had, we had a current budget of $17,000.
$17,000.
But we've only collected $3150 this year. We collected $9,828.75 last year. I, I mean, there's probably wide variation on year-by-year basis, so you really can't budget for that.
No, but I, we might need to make sure that we're.
It's our charge for it.
Yeah. We, we get a lot more calls than.
And, and I know it splits out, too, if it's out in the.
I, I know that, I know the trustees aren't big fans of the charging for that, but I don't. They, a lot of people feel like you're already paying for the fire service. Why should you get charged for it? This is low hanging fruit.
With your insurance.
If the insurance company's got money there to do it, pressure to bill for it.
It's not, basically, you send the bill for it, they turn it into insurance. If the insurance doesn't cover it.
Then it's a wash. That's the way.
Okay.
That's what I understand we do.
Okay. That's why I was wishing it was here, I just, I wasn't sure. We'll be able to talk about it when we actually talk about its expenditure budget, so we can bring it up again then.
Just, he's needed one of them numbers, seems like you should get for a call or a car racking. If a car's leaking antifreeze, antifreeze, it's hazmat.
Yeah. And that you charge by the hour.
Yep.
So the next page, two, street department. We're not budgeting any revenues in these areas because they, they're very sporadic. You can see that, you know, miscellaneous might be something, we, we, we just don't know, and we never really kind of budget much. I mean, we've done 1,000, 1,000, did 1,487, we've only received $10. I mean, if we get something in here, it's not gonna be a budget maker either way. So we're just leaving these at zero. The next group is, is the airport. First thing you see there is interest earnings of $4, I think. After a while, you just ask the question, why have we put it in there? But it's the Rentson Royalty.
It cost us four bucks.
Probably cost us four bucks to do it, if that's the. Rentson royalties is the only revenue source of consequence in the airport, and we just replicated this year's budget from last year's. It might be that it could be a little bit larger, and we might adjust that, but I have yet to talk with the airport about their expenditure budget and something that I do at the same time. But right now, we just put the same plug numbers for what we had from last year. And you can see reimbursements is a one-time thing, so we put zero in there. So right now, you, you can see that the airport totals just under $4,000. Garbage fees is an in-and-out. Whatever we use, we pay from the standpoint of charging our customers, charging, in, in handing fee check back. We're seeing a little bit of growth in the use of, of the garbage service if you project it on a, on a seven-month basis, but I don't think it's gonna be dramatically different than the, somewhere between 200, 215,000. It has materially no impact upon the overall budget because it is, again, whatever we charge is whatever we're charged. Library revenues, you can see here at the bottom of page two and into page three. I had a meeting set up with the library last week, and then it got postponed to this week, so we'll talk about library revenues when they're, when they have their expenditures. You can see that overall, the impact of the library as far as the revenues are concerned is, is really centered about how much the county gives them, but that gets expanded into their operating budget. And we don't give them revenue, we count them as, as a line item for our expenditures, so that's where this actually gets picked up. There was some consternation last year because they built their budget without a recognition of what the county was going to give them, and they omitted that from their budget. We had to do an adjustment to that because the county actually did make that decision, and it was just after the budget was printed, even though they knew that the budget was gonna have that 27,000, and it's my expectation that the 27,000 is the same this year. I just haven't heard from the county on that yet this week. Otherwise, you can see that library revenues are pretty much the same there. You can also see that they have a little segregation for state funding. We'll get that number also, but you can see that it ranges 14, $1,600. I don't expect that it's gonna change much. Any comments about that? Okay. The next thing is parking wreck revenues. Not a whole lot of change here. Pretty much a replication from, in recognition of a little bit of growth from last year's budget, although current to date shows 22,780, which could get you close to $45,000, $46,000. What I really did was, is I looked at the revenues of two years ago, the revenues of one year ago, and, or two, three years ago, two years ago, and last year, came up with 44, 46, 6. This number is a little fluffy. I mean, it could go up or down 1,000 or two, but I, again, materially, this is really what we're talking about as far as parking rackets. Not gonna be a whole lot of difference. Pool fees. This is a tricky one, only from the standpoint that you can see that in the current fiscal year, we received $10,020 in pool fees. That's because most of the pool fees come in at the beginning of the swim season, which is at the end of our fiscal year. So we fully expect $35,000, and that's comparable to what we received in the last year's actual revenues. Otherwise, lessons, reflecting about what we've done in the past. Miscellaneous revenues, we just budget zero anyway. Swimming pool concessions. We did 11,000 two years ago, 10,000 this past year. I don't know whether 11,000 is the right number, if you multiply the revenue expenditures year-to-date. We put in 10 to be conservative. The pool might, it, it could be 11 instead of 10, but again, materially, I don't think this has a whole lot of impact on decision-making. Cemetery stuff, I think, kind of speaks for itself. Really no changes there. Going down to transfers into the general fund, this is where we have to make final decisions about, about how much money we need to bring in from other sources, particularly from the utilities. So we're leaving it blank until we've reviewed all the expenditures to make a determination. This number is probably the last number that we would actually put into the budget. So understand that we had budgeted $827,000. We actually have transferred in 950. Likewise, we've transferred out of the general fund, money, too, that reflects movement into special project funds or movement into debt service and currencies. So I think when you look at this number, it's gonna have to be more reflective of what our operating costs are, we're trying to get at that, what our operating cost needs are this past year because we're changing out a lot of those debt accounts. You can see a lot more money flowing in and flowing out as a result. But again, that number will be one of the last numbers that we plug in. Property taxes, now we're getting done with the nitty-gritty. $635,000. That's based upon what our anticipated increase of assessed valuation of taxable increase, which is about a half a percent. It also is reflective of a lower utilization of TIF, which is what we've experienced in the last two years. The reason why it's, the TIF increases have occurred, or the increase have occurred is also the valuation of the TIF issues gone up, but we're not utilizing the TIF money. Agland taxes, 168 bucks. Tort liability. We got in that, we, we got that in there now, right, Sandy? The tort liability, we, we added to, it wasn't this one, no. What one was it that we added? Workers' comp, right? Is, is that in the tort liability?
No.
Workers' comp?
No, it's in employee benefits.
Okay, it's in, okay, we got that coming on down there, okay. Tort liability is, is your insurance policy that, that's taxable as a separate tax. Utility excise tax, it's a nebulous thing, it was a shift in state law as far as this excise tax business is concerned. It, it is a nominal amount, we're not even budgeting for it.
Hey Gary.
Yeah?
What is a tort liability?
A tort liability?
Yeah. Your first lineup. What is that?
What is a tort liability? If you get sued.
Okay.
You've got, you've got insurance if you get sued, meaning the city. If we, okay? You, you, you need to carry that insurance, everybody does.
Okay. I, I didn't know what.
Yeah, okay.
So how is it a revenue?
It's property tax revenue.
It's part of the property tax. We can charge them for that expense.
It's a dollar of that $8.10.
No, it's, it's, it's separate from that. It's state law allows for you to.
So we can tax.
For that separately.
We can tax the public to pay that bill. It's basically the, in my language. It's basically the, is my language?
Yes. Yeah. And that's what we have been doing for decades, literally. You can see that our new budget shows an increase there because of the cost of that insurance has gone up. Getting past those property taxes, now we're into beer and alcohol licenses, cigarette permits. Those two are pretty much the standard same. Building permits, we raised the number on building permits because we're optimistic that we're going to see more construction. If we don't, we don't. Cable franchise fee.
You got pretty hopeful on that building.
You know whose number that is? That's your community development director's number. He says, if we're going to do it, then by gosh, let's say that we're going to be doing it. So, we brought it in there.
Yeah. He got too many zeros.
Notice that he's conveniently not here tonight. Cable franchise, you can see that we're really not showing any growth there. We're showing it's about a break-even. You're going to see over time that cable TV is going to slowly go away because everybody else is changing how they do their TV. It used to be a real growth revenue source fifteen, twenty years ago. Interest. That's a big number now, isn't it? That's because we're starting to be very assertive in how we're doing interest. We are now earning seven thousand dollars a month in interest, which translates to eighty-four thousand dollars a year. And I hope squeeze that up to a hundred, but I can't do it right now. We've got to have a better cash management to get it up. But that eighty-four thousand dollars is a huge move. Now, one of the things that we need to talk to you about this, and we haven't figured this out yet, how we would do it, is recognize that the money that goes into that number could be redistributed to the utilities and all the others made up. But at this point in time, we're just going to show it as a general fund revenue. And the reason for that is that that may very well reduce the need to move all the utility money into the general fund. The other thing is, is you can just call it administration fee cost for us moving their money around. You can justify it forty ways at home. But it does show that we are making huge moves. I mean, look what we budgeted last year, two thousand dollars. Community industrial property tax replacement. This is the money that's always kind of under siege a little bit from the state because it's the replacement tax. And when we reduced the, when the state reduced the property taxes for industrial kind of development, that was something they did statewide as an economic development opportunity. But then they said, okay, if we reduce it for the industries in the state, and we will reimburse the city what they lost. The state mandated this to happen. And the only thing to be cognizant of is that that number has been under attack by the state legislature for the last few years. And we were within, I think, two votes of losing all of that money. Because the state wanted to take it and fill in a budget hole for their own budget. And as far as municipal government in the state of Iowa, that is where you draw the line and raise the flag and say, look, you're not going to do that because you made a decision to create an economic development incentive with not your money, but with the city's money. And the governor, back in the day, when he did this, said, okay, I understand that. We're going to take that property tax down as an economic development incentive, but we're not going to penalize the cities for doing it. Now, the governor made that deal with the cities, upheld it all the way through his terms of office. And so did the current governor. But the governor really put the muscle behind it. It's now in China. And this is fighting words as far as cities are concerned if you take that money. That is, if the state takes that money. Zoning fees. We put in a hundred bucks. We might actually see some activity here if, in fact, we get a little bit of commercial development or see some of these, see more than just a onesie-twosie house construction, but rather costs related to housing development that requires rezoning. But right now, it's just a plug number. You can see it's the same hundred bucks that we've had for a while. Miscellaneous sales tax collected. We're just riding with the same three thousand bucks that we've had before. I don't know where the eighty-six hundred is slow or high. We're just using the same plug number. Miscellaneous revenue is the same thing. Refunds and reimbursements. Again, a thousand dollar plug number. We're only running at a hundred and sixty-nine bucks on a two-thousand-dollar budget from last year. The year before, we budgeted a thousand, got almost five thousand dollars. So, yeah, whatever. All right. That is all that we have to do with revenues. Don't pay attention to the little last stuff there because that's another portion of the budget that we will talk about later, actually not even today. Any other comments about revenues? All right. That's done with the purple label. Now, we're going to get into expenditures. First one is for water. And that's all the stapled sheets that's under the orange label. In fact, I want to take a stop right here instead and talk about all of the personnel numbers for all of these budgets. And we're going to do it with this handout, the separate holdout that has no label. This is stuff that's prepared directly by Sandy. What you're going to see here, it will also have general fund employee shares here. But understand that when we go through this, this is going to be part of what you're going to be going through tonight as well as the next meeting related to the budget. This will take out about a half to maybe sixty percent of all the budget documents that you'll be reviewing tonight. This summarizes all the personnel stuff. So, I'll turn it over to Sandy. And Sandy, now I describe what we see here, but also when we get to the utilities, how the distribution thing works.
Okay, on the top sheet where it says police, this is for the general fund. I've just taken their new wage, figured their annual ten percent overtime if they qualify for overtime, and then their annual gross. Add that all together and you get your department total. Police is by far the highest, three hundred and fifty thousand. Fire, I just guesstimated a hundred and some fire calls. And we pay a hundred and fifty dollars per call. Divide that among however many families show up. That's eighteen thousand. And the police chief's salary is fourteen thousand. The total is thirty-two.
Fire chief, not police chief.
Oh, sorry.
Sandy, there is one thing on here that probably needs to be adjusted. You got Zach Dunleavy for his OTs. He'll be salaried, so we need to take that one.
He's salaried, okay. I don't have one, but I can get you one. For streets. Danny is here with twenty percent of his salary. And then Keely at ten percent. So, you see the annual gross. And then for those two, I've taken twenty percent of Danny's and that equals the thirteen thousand one eighty-four. And ten percent of Keely's is four thousand.
Where's the rest of her salary come from?
We'll get to, it comes from the utilities. That comes also from another source, too.
Shop. Adam, he's going to be split also. So, the shop is only going to account for twenty percent of his. The library, we gave them all a two percent raise. And we figured the same way, a hundred and twenty thousand. Parks and rec. Taylor doesn't get overtime and Robbie does. That comes out to ninety-two thousand. The pool. The manager gets nine seventy-five an hour. And she works forty hours a week and it's about a fifteen-week summer. So, that comes out to fifty-eight fifty. The water safety instructor. This can vary depending how many kids she has. That's ten hours a week for fifteen weeks. She has three head guards. And there's forty hours a week for them. The lifeguards, there has to be five guards on duty at all times. That's five guards times forty hours. And the concessions, I just budgeted for one concession worker forty hours a week. And that, the pool wage total is fifty thousand nine twenty-five.
Make a comment about the pool. When they do classes, aerobics and stuff like that, the people who provide those services charge directly to those folks too. So, it's not just this money here. You're in the other money directly from customers that they provide class services or exercises.
And the lifeguards, they, each one here wants to give lessons. They don't have to give private lessons. If they want to, they pay the city fifty dollars for the use of our pool to give their private lessons. Council and mayor, I figured thirty-six meetings a year, that'd be three a month. And then mayor's salary, for total, thirteen thousand eight hundred. PNA. This is basically all administrative personnel. Over on the right, you'll see the percentage. And that's how much is, how much of their salary is in PNA. That's how they're broken down. So, Gary is twenty percent. Chris is fifty. I'm twenty. Brenda's twenty. Keely is twenty-five. And Alicia is forty percent. And that comes up for total of ninety-six five. For total, general fund salaries of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-five. Your next sheet is also the general fund. You see the gross wages, which is from the other page of the individuals. The total departmental IFRS, FICA. The total group insurance, which includes health, dental, life, disability. And the DBS, which is our third party that tells us how much extra we owe on the claim to make it equal the union contract. So, all that is in your group insurance. The workers' comp. Medical reimbursement is how much the city is liable for for each employee's health insurance. And then the wellness drug testing. I gave each employee five hundred dollars. And that includes, like any random drug testing, they would be drawn to take. The mutual center membership, flu shots, the wellness lab we have in the fall. That's all included in that. The firemen. Not every fireman qualifies for IFRS. The firemen are considered temporary employees. So, in order to qualify for IFRS, they have to make a thousand dollars in two consecutive quarters. And so, very few of the firemen do that. The fire chief does, obviously. But we have, right now, I think we have two, maybe three firemen who qualify for IFRS. Their wellness amount. That includes their pre-employment physicals, which are very expensive. So, that's why that number is so much higher than anybody else. Streets. On this, Danny is, well, like streets on the other one, twenty percent. And Keely's ten percent. And then each one of the departments, as you look down through here, they're all broken down the same as they were on the other sheet. I'm not going to go through this unless you have questions. The workers' comp, it's kind of a guesstimate. Looking at what they paid last year and then I just added ten percent. You got a question? Mr. Hilbert?
I'm looking at Robbie's. Is it Robbie? Yeah, Robbie's insurance. And that seems unbelievably high versus some of the other ones there.
That's because they're a hundred percent, aren't they? Or all the rest they're a hundred percent?
See, fifteen thousand on the health insurance.
That would be a family policy, yeah? Look at the police, there's some.
Okay. I was just looking, comparing to the other ones there on that page, I see.
Do they pay a portion of their health insurance?
Yes, they do. The city pays eighty-three percent of the total premium.
Of this number here? Or is this our?
No.
This is our eighty-three percent.
This is our number, yes.
Okay. City pays eighty-three percent of family.
Eighty-three, they pay full, single, and then eighty-three percent of the other policies, whether it be employee, child, vows, or family.
Okay, how do you come up with eighty-three percent of what it is?
That's just what it is. And how they came up with that. But if you change that, you lose your grandfather status. Moving on to water. In the column that says percent raise, you'll see that some would say contract. And that would be the union contract. Some say pay plan, and that would be the administrative pay plan. I did put two percent in there for Gary because he hasn't been in any of the pay plans. On the water accounting, if you look at the percentages, Gary's again twenty percent. Chris is down to twelve point five percent. Danny, me, and Brenda are all twenty percent. Keely is sixteen point two five percent. Alicia is fifteen. Kyle is twenty-five. And then Adam will be twenty percent. Coming out of water. On the other side is your benefits. And it's figured just like the others were.
Sandy, just tell what happened with IFRS this year as far as cost is concerned. Overall.
Overall, the police, the contribution for police went down just a hair. Like from nine point eight to nine point six. I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I can't say for certain. But it went down just a little bit. For everybody else, stayed the same.
And of course, FICA is the same.
FICA is seven point six five percent.
The comment about that is that we, property tax for IFRS and FICA, that's not part of the eight dollars and ten cents also. So, what that means is that there'll be a very small.
So what that means is that there'll be a very small property tax reduction as far as IFRS and FICA, uh, this year because of the number went down for IFRS.
Moving on to sewer.
I've got a question on water. Look, Farland's wage goes up forty-four cents and Bragg's goes up eighty cents.
Yeah, I think that's because he, he still has a step, doesn't he? Probably a step increase.
You wouldn't think, he's been here, what, five or six years?
Yeah, I think it took eight or ten years to get all the way through.
Difference should only be the lead.
So this doesn't show the lead? Yeah, that, that's why the twenty-two eighty-two versus twenty-two twenty-four.
That doesn't work out, what's the lead, get forty-five cents, forty cents, what do they get?
If you have a license, you'll get forty cents. Okay, so Mark's June thirtieth wage is correct. And then his July one would be twenty-two forty-two plus forty cents for certification, plus twenty-two eighty-two. Dean is, would be twenty-one forty-four. Twenty-two twenty-four, yeah, that's what Dean says. That's what the wage scale for the pound, that says.
And he gets that forty cents also, right?
Yes, Dean does.
Look, Farland's wage doesn't have the lead number on it in this paperwork because twenty-two thirty-eight, two percent, it's twenty-two eighty-two.
The contract for Mark for July one of eighteen is twenty-one ninety-eight. So twenty-one ninety-eight plus forty cents is twenty-two thirty-eight.
That's what, that's what he's making now?
Yes.
So two percent of that makes it twenty-two eighty-two, which is what you'll get July one. But the forty cents isn't on there for the lead position.
Sandy, go back, what was his top of scale last year without the forty cents?
July one of eighteen is twenty-one ninety-eight.
All right, twenty-one ninety-eight times one point oh-two is twenty-two forty-one plus the four, twenty-two forty-two plus the forty cents. Twenty-two eighty-two.
Well, where's this twenty-two thirty-eight number come from?
Twenty-one ninety-eight plus forty cents.
Twenty-one ninety-eight plus the forty cents. You just... There's no two percent on the forty cents.
I understand that number. You just said it was twenty-two forty-one or twenty-two forty-two plus forty.
Plus forty.
So the twenty-two thirty-eight is his current salary plus the forty cents?
It's with the forty.
Twenty-two thirty-eight includes the forty cents.
Okay, so then what's... So what's his salary gonna be seven-one?
Twenty-two eighty-two.
Does that got the forty cents in it?
Yes. Okay, going to sewer. It's, all four utilities are basically the same. The field crew, they're under by the contract. And then for the accounting side, which is the business side, um, everybody's broken down. And the free utilities, the same, they say, all free utilities are the same for each person. And the same way for the benefits. Electric, Rusty is in electric plant. Dennis, Brigham, and David are in distribution. And they're all according to contract. And then again, the electric accounting.
Isn't Dave Dittenhall used to be half engine room, half outside?
Yes, he did.
Who changed, did we change that?
This is all under one, isn't it, Sandy?
Um, Dave is all under distribution now.
He is now? So who changed that? Because wasn't he half in and half out?
Um, I think this was changed, finished up last year.
We didn't change anything from last year, right?
No, everything's the same.
It's the same.
So it got changed last year, is that what you're saying?
If I remember correctly, yes.
We changed that then. We probably got it, it was done at that time, it was done to the budget last time. Probably without the proper information.
Um, moving to gas. We have an open position in gas. And I budgeted, um, for the starting, assuming the person starts before the first of the year. And then the accounting is the same. Then your next page, um, it shows a total of one million two hundred and forty-eight thousand thirty-eight dollars and sixty cents. And that is what we can ask in the tax asking. These are general fund salaries and then the employee benefits that can be included in the tax asking.
Understand what that means is, is that the, um, IFRS, FICA, insurance, medical reimbursement, workers' comp, all of that, um, that was, that's in the utilities cannot be part of this tax asking. It's only for those general fund expenditures. That's why we kind of go through this process of splitting this stuff out. Those utilities have to use their revenues to offset those costs.
The last page just, um, shows the total salary and benefit budget.
And that's for all accounts?
Yes.
Questions, comments?
I got questions on Dave's salary, but we'll talk about it later.
Okay, then we go on to the utility expenditures, the orange label. Understand that we went through a whole lot of stuff here as far as, um, these line items related to all of the costs. You look at the first entry to review would be on page forty-three, the very last two items, which is dues and subscriptions and travel and trading. Not much change in either one of these. We bumped the travel up five hundred bucks because, um, I think that there was some other, Danny, it was, it was some...
Some training and traveling?
Yeah.
Just, uh, we have...
Another licensure or something?
Yeah, we have one working on it, it's water tube.
Okay.
To plan on protecting water tubes for the future.
Okay. Turning the page, building, repair, maintenance. We just added two thousand in case something happened. We had, we budgeted seven hundred and fifty, but it turns out that we repaired, we, repairs year-to-date here is just, uh, twenty-three hundred and fifty-seven, so we bumped it up a little bit. Uh, from the current budget, two years ago, we were doing a thousand dollars actual and three, and at last, and a year ago, we're doing a thousand dollars actual, so, uh, we, we said, okay, we, we're beaten over five hundred dollars certainly, and now we had a big number here for twenty-three, so we just added effectively another thousand dollars to that number. Gasoline is pretty much based upon, uh, what we see in usage over the last few years. A little bit higher than what we budgeted for, but you can see that our revenue and expenditures to date was twenty-four hundred. We're obviously going to have more gas than that between now and the end of the year. Vehicle maintenance is about the same, fifteen hundred dollars. Equipment repair maintenance, added five hundred dollars to what we budgeted last year. You can see that we're at three, just over three thousand year-to-date, so, um, we don't expect much more. Um, you can see that, but two year, two budgets ago, we, we budgeted fifteen, but spent five thousand, and then we spent seventeen seventy-nine, uh, two years ago, so we've added to this. But as compared to last year's budget, we added five hundred dollars. Uh, utilities, water distribution, this is the utility costs. We think that we're actually lowering that number. You can see that we budgeted fifty-five hundred, but, uh, it's only coming in at two thousand right now. Of course, we've got some tough weather right now, but I think that you can see our expenditure level is down. We put in four thousand. Telephone's about the same. Engineering fees is a one-time thing. If we do engineering, uh, it'll be project-related. Uh, we're, that's why we're getting away from the capital improvements in these budgets. We're going to have project budgeting for those things. You'd see that in the next, uh, go-around, the engineering will be incorporated in those costs. We talked about the idea of having a city engineer. Right now, what we would do is just to try and figure out one cost, monitor it out of the general fund, or out of streets. I don't know where we're going to put it exactly, but, um, if these numbers start to actually be more applicable to the water and, uh, and then electric and the sewer utilities and whatever, um, we may very well take that out of contractual cost. But right now, because we haven't done it yet, we're just going to try and centralize that cost.
Why is the telephone so high?
Danny, these, these are numbers we could go with for a while.
I mean, I don't know, the utility bills, utility bills and the phone and all that's all divided between all the business systems, we just, all we do is divide it and what's billed for the period, so.
So that total city bill, they get a portion of it?
Right, you know, like the payroll, they divide that out.
So it's all the cell phones and iPads and all that stuff? That's twenty percent of it?
Do you know what I'm saying?
Um...
Something like that.
I don't know what the break is.
I don't know what the break is, but you're going to see it about always staying, so.
Sounds like an outrage, just something out for...
It's, it's more than telephone, obviously. I mean, we're talking about computer stuff here too.
Still seems all high.
Insurance, you can see that we're just going what was budgeted last year and the approximate expenditures of what's been going on. Contract work, uh, this one is, is up. Why is that, Danny? Miscellaneous contract work in the water?
Uh, working on, we have the Country Club of States extension, that's a dead-end bore, whatever they're doing out there and just some, uh, other, uh, cost of miscellaneous contract, I would give the CBT grant, they think it's on, evaluated, that's, uh, out there, so.
If we have any other expenditures related to, um, the big, uh, water sewer grant project, we'll actually take that out of fund balance, that would be interesting. Um, you'd see that later in those projects. We have to actually do a, an authorized transfer for that, that'll come out of fund balance. These are just, um, that, that particular project that Danny's talking about, that Country Club of States, it's a small one enough to not really call it a capital improvement project. We're trying to make capital improvement projects come in at a hundred thousand dollars a month. What additional minor equipment are we adding this year, Danny, for the seven thousand?
Um, valve wrench, ratcheting valve wrench, there's some, uh, pipe freezer, which is a big expense, it has rigid, like, pipe freezer, about thirty-three hundred. Uh, Honda generator, a new self-crying pump, uh, some through bolt ratchet sets. Ratcheting valve wrench, hydrant wrench, uh, some work lights, that's probably close to that. For water.
You see under meter supplies is a significant drop, that's because of the AMI. We're down to ten thousand from expenditure, expenditure of two hundred and ten thousand plus. Office supplies, fifty bucks. Distribution supplies, we're up to forty-eight thousand here, Danny, from...
That's your six thousand for hydrant stem, replacing hydrant stems, that basic infrastructure, there are eight of them we'll replace this year, the six thousand. Danny, let's deal. That's about what we do every year, I mean, that we just, we started last year.
Postseason shipping, um, scientific first aid supply. Uh, miscellaneous supplies, we've got two thousand, supplies that we've done before. Capital equipment improvement, you've got thirty thousand dollars, Danny, is that?
That's out, uh, new truck, wasn't only new, used, uh, so looking at a, uh, truck with a box, replace Dean's, uh, splitter, he's going to explore, and then get a work truck for Dean. We're looking at trying to buy a used truck and a used box, so basically, because a new truck will be thirty grand by itself, the box is about twelve grand. Looking at trying to get maybe a used truck and a box, something together there.
If you look at the next set of, um, costs, you start to see the distribution costs, related to what Sandy was talking about here. You go all the way down to, uh... you, you see some of these places where you got dues, subscription, trading, travel, that, that you see for these particular lines over here, we, we just have them actually zeroed out here. I don't think there's anything here that's related that is part of the twenty percent, so.
No uniform allowance?
Uh, where was that uniform allowance? If, if you go back to, um, there, there's, there's two sets of uniform allowance. The first one shows a thousand, and this one is where you see most of it as far as that's medical reimbursement. Uniform allowance here would be stuff that would be, Sandy, the, the, the business account, right? The, the people that are in the car.
This, like, six-hundred-eight-twelve, sixty-one-eight-one would be for the girls up front.
Right.
The contract says, um, five shirts a year, um, a jacket every two years, pair of shoes every year, um, glasses every two years.
You didn't add that one on? Probably should put, let's just put back the, what should we put in there, Sandy, four hundred?
I would say this is the year for last.
Well, this-
Somebody else said five-five.
Five hundred? All right. Put five hundred in there. Dues and subscriptions, training and travel. I don't know if there's anything that we should be putting in here, but we barely are spending any money.
Would there be anything in there for the new? Meter system, do I have to have any kind of training or anything for that?
It should be paid for, I think.
It's paid for, it seems. The audit expense wasn't put in here, that's a, that's a total cost that's divided out, we should put that in there. Should probably put in five thousand there. Right here. Eight-twelve, sixty-four-oh-one.
Five thousand?
Yeah. And as far as insurance and tort liability is concerned, we didn't see much of a change there, so that's probably going to be about the same, eight hundred dollars or whatever. We'll have to plug that number in based on our actual cost. It'll be, it'll be around a thousand and less than that. Brenda, did you, were you able to get any of this stuff entered in, or is it just left out?
The, the eight-one-twelve section, sure, left out in all of them. When I provided the worksheets, they had just the department, they did not include the account, that eight-one-twelve section.
Okay.
Well, I guess all of them should have some kind of a number, or that ranting.
I mean, we'll have to go through it, you can see that the only number that's really big is the utility sales tax expense, and that's kind of a wash, pass-through number. Because we get it and we have to go and, and put it back through here. That, that actually balances out. We'll, we'll put those numbers in, I, but we didn't have the eight-twelves and, didn't do any of that entry then, right? When we come back, the next time, we'll have these all printed out, those numbers in there. As you can tell, not other than the sales tax, which is a, a wash number, these are small numbers.
Small ones add up faster than big ones.
They don't total up bigger, though. Purchased water. I asked Chris to give me a number on that. I think that realistically, we can just put in the same three-hundred-thousand dollars as last year. We, we keep budgeting less than that, but you can see that one-forty-two, we might very well be up in the one-eighty-five range, one-eighty-six range, or rather, two-eighty-five or two-eighty-six range, and keep budgeting around three hundred, it comes in less. What happens is, is that if we purchase less than three hundred thousand, it's just extra money in the fund balance of the water account. We keep anticipating buying more water than we have. And I just put in the same three hundred thousand.
If we just spend some money on the, put it in a mixer in this tower off the square, so we wouldn't have to drop the levels much, and then pull it back up, we could save money on purchasing. Right now, we're purchasing more because we have to drain it, and move it up when the chemical levels get in balance. Because we're not using a lot of water.
No, that power, it's the only one.
Just because of the, the foundation stuff all shut down, so we're not using a lot of water, so perhaps as we take samples and we find out it's not in balance, we drain it way down, fill it back up, and then get, to get the core history, so.
So that makes your cost.
Here, and I think it's right around between estimate twenty-five, fifty thousand, it's all emissions cheap, ours installation is the-
Yeah.
It's got-
The expensive part is-
Yeah, so, if that's a place where there's a chance to save some.
It would take for it to sell over a number of years.
Right, and plus, the other thing is to, with the mixer, that you don't have the potential for the freezer breaking, because right now, and that's another reason we keep it down low and have to change, too, because then we want the freezer plus up the tops. That is one project we need to look at now. But also, if our homes will up, increase and use more water, that helps, too, so we just gotta, with the water easy to be in town, it's a problem.
Everybody has a pool in their front yard.
We're not showing a transfer out of water this year. If there is, it's going to have to be specifically project-related. And that transfer out could very well happen as far as it relates to the C D D G project. But at this point in time, the only thing that we're going to do is, is, this, this doesn't affect as a revenue as much as it is just taking it out of the fund balance that we talked about before, so. Yeah, it shows in expenditure, but the reality is, is that we're looking at debt as far as kind of one-time expense, how the balance is opposed to an operating type cost.
Just another mention on water, if you didn't talk about that mission, there's two wastewater, two water workers from Put Mission going to prison for, for, uh-
False finding records?
Basically, well, not false finding, just basically not notification, notification to public, so that is for, so intended to do that. So again, this, D N R's really looking at that stuff now, so that's Put Mission, they've got everybody on watch, so they're really starting to look at numbers and talk about stuff, so, like our potential well out north of town, issues like that, it's changing, so there's a lot more D N R stuff coming down, so we gotta really look at that water levels and chemicals types. Manslaughter doesn't work the old four.
Page forty-seven. Again, the transfer is going to be based upon what we're going to do with, with the capital improvement related to the grant. You can see transfers in, we're not showing anything. Principal redemption. Year-to-date, we've done thirty-six-one-twenty. Brenda, have we got this now as a line item as far as our debt service is concerned?
No, we're going to start, that'll start, I think we'll talk later in this.
But we don't show it on here yet, right?
No.
Okay. What we're going to do is, is that we have, uh, we show a completely different set of, of budget situations for the two revenue bonds that we have out of the water fund. One was issued in two thousand fourteen, and one that was issued in two thousand fifty. Each one of them has a monthly payment of just over five thousand dollars. We pay about thirty thousand dollars a year for each. It is the same flat payment that we will be paying until twenty-fifty-five and twenty-fifty-six, and that is for work-related, the conversion of, of R A T. Those projects are complete, part of the problem that we've had as far as accounting is concerned, is that in one case or two cases, we were actually paying that service out of the active project accounts, which was just wrong. So what we will be doing here is setting up these accounts specifically in the water fund themselves to show that as, as a cost, as opposed to segregating them out someplace else. As a result, the numbers that you see here are zeroing out because we're making some of these changes. We don't have any grants, any of that kind of stuff. You can see that this thing is really petering out as far as the end of the water fund, because we are actually changing out how we're going about doing project accounting, as well as recognizing that some of these things are all old, there's no more expenditures coming, and as a result, these, we're trying to get rid of some of these accounts, because they're just not, uh, used. And that gets you all the way to the top of page forty-nine, and again, this is about some of the stuff related to the redemption costs. Again, we gotta make those changes. This is really as much an accounting issue as anything, it doesn't really have anything to do with the budget. And at the top of page forty-nine is where we stop with the water. Any more comments about water? Be ready for the next. The next is the paint. And it starts out on page forty-nine, as you can see, we just ignored the first hot portion of it, because that's water. Now we're going into, obviously, sewer. Interest earnings here are a distribution that isn't necessarily related to that eighty-four thousand dollars. That interest earnings is off of other accounts that we have in other banks, literally. Our, our cash management is a little awkward, because we have, actually, in the utility accounts, some rather large money markets and some small CDs. And Iowa State Bank, and Bank of the West, and I think we even got a little bit into credit. We increased the interest cost, the interest earnings cost here by twelve thousand with anticipation that interest rates are going up, that we'll probably try and improve the investment portfolio there also. There might be some overlap with that eighty-four thousand, I can't tell you, because we're still trying to figure out where we need to have operating cash money versus where we can put money in reserve. We curious, as you well know, as we talked about with those fund balances in the past, some of these utilities carried some really good balances. The other thing about sewer is, is that that interest also indicates to you that we have some good balances here that we might be able to move more money into the project account for the city treatment plant. But we also have some costs that we're going to have to transfer this year for the sewer, for the sewer water pipe project that was advantaged by the C D D G trade. You can see the revenues, we, we got projected five-seventeen, that is exactly what we did for budget last year, and was, we, we received five-seventeen, seven-ten, um, the year before that, we're running right about on that number. Penalties for sewer, we don't budget for that. It's whatever we get, it's going to be just a nominal amount. Sales tax revenue for sewer. We're sticking with what's been going on here, about fifty-three-hundred dollars. Interdepartment revenue for sewer. We're stating, sticking with that number, which is about the same one we had before. That's sometimes comboed along with the water, because you've got water coming in and sewer going out as far as the building is concerned. Miscellaneous revenues, we're just sticking with where we were in the past. Reimbursements, we're not budgeting because it's just a nominal, if you get it, kind of money. Merchandise sales, the same thing, twenty-two-hundred, just twenty-five. Sewer distribution total for the new budget, no transfers, we're sticking at, um, five-eighty-five, four-hundred. To be honest with you, as far as sewer revenue is concerned, that's a low number. But this is a number that will be amended, and a budget amended, this should amend it this year, because that's where you're going to start seeing collections for the new city treatment plant. There's no proposal to, they do that yet, they're still working with the engineers to come up with this innovative process, but this budget will go through a formal amendment to add to this account, so that we know what we're going to have, have on hand to start paying for plan upgrade. I think it could easily be anticipated that we will double this number in the first go-around. We already talked about all the salaries, workers' comp, uniform allowance, we haven't filled in that number, but you can see it's, we're running it at about the same, we probably should be putting in about twenty-two-hundred here, because this is the year we get the extra stuff. Medical reimbursements, um, five thousand, five thousand, three thousand, we put forty-five-hundred in this year. Drug testing and wellness, doubled that one up from last year's budget. Probably going to have more of that happening this particular go-around. Training and travel's about the same. Little bit money, money up, because we know that we're probably going to have to have a little bit more travel relates to sewer treatment plan, program. Building payroll replacement, we did twenty-six-hundred right now, I think we'll just keep it at about twenty-five. Buildings and ground maintenance, same number this year as we had last year. Vehicle gasoline, we actually dropped to five hundred bucks from last year. Vehicle maintenance, um, current budget is twenty-five-hundred, we've only spent seven-hundred-and-seventy-five bucks. We increased it to three thousand dollars, but it's down a lot from where we were spending money in prior years. Although, in two years ago and three years ago, we budgeted three thousand dollars, so that was the finish line that we used. Equipment repair and maintenance, eighty-five-hundred, we had ten thousand in the current budget. Danny, what do you got for equipment repair and maintenance there?
Just looking at some of the station pumps we got to work on and generator service stuff there for the distribution.
Got our mechanic to do some of that?
Possibly, we don't have a surf, I mean, some of those generators require, you know.
He can change the oil and all that.
Yeah, oil stuff, yeah, but.
Hickory Hills expense, we've had this number in here for a while, I don't know why. We're saying zero this year. We haven't spent anything out of this in three years, and I don't know what we're budgeting for.
They always plan ahead for, uh, pump replacements, about every six years, the life cycle, so between maintenance, repair of those. We, we currently have one out right now coming back, so that was another thing we're looking at, but we should, we will have expense coming up, but.
Will it be this year?
Yeah, we're moving those to, this one we moved to the next.
Oh, okay.
We combined it two thousand.
So you combined this number into the, into the land then?
Right, we got the, all right, the other maintenance, so we just took it down to Hickory Hills.
So that, that went up, up, the one above or one below? Where is it going?
See, they put the repair maintenance, so they.
Okay, so the one above, okay. All right. Utilities for the sewer plant, um, there's seventy-five thousand dollars in here. Why is that, Danny?
Well, they're, they're high, and they are, uh, for only half a year, they're, um.
Five times.
New lights in that building, you know. Yeah.
Two and a half times.
I don't know, I don't know if it's a type of twenty-five or seventy-five, I don't.
Yeah, that-
I think it's twenty-five.
I bet that should be twenty-five, not seventy-five.
I think they're putting heating cans and taking it home.
Yeah. I think that number should go down.
Let's change the twenty, seventy-five to twenty-five there. Let's change the 75 to 25 there. Telephone is the same split. Engineering fees, again, we're gonna try and figure that out from the standpoint of project basis, and if we have a city engineer, we'll have to redistribute later. Insurance is the same. We budgeted $8,000 this past year. You see that we've only had an $80 expenditure for that. We generally pay the insurance mostly all at once, right?
In the spring, Pam.
Yeah. Rents, leases, equipment and vehicles, this one's $4,000. This is a new one. Danny, explain this one.
So what we're gonna do this year is, there, want a mini excavator, less impact, get this hole farther away from the hole, and also getting closer to the homes, working in tight spaces. So instead of buying one out, purchase one, I'd like to lease one for the first year to see if it's something we're gonna use most, how much we use it, all that. So this is a $15,000 six-month lease, the amount of the lease goes towards the purchase if we choose to purchase it, but otherwise, we rent it for six months, see how, see how much we use it. And basically, that number's actually divided between all the utilities, that $4,000 divided between water, sewer, gas, and battery, and it's divided out for six months, so it's about $1,250 a month, I think somewhere around there for each utility.
Use electric, I mean.
That's $4,000. But $16,000 for six months?
About 15,500, probably needs that.
It's a 37.
Cheaper than that.
Well, use one, yeah. $48,000 new is what the price is new for one. This is 11 foot nine with the tamper, with two different sized buckets. So, yeah, and it'll have to be approved by resolution if we lease it too, so.
What kind is it?
Garmar.
Garmar. Dan Mar.
It's actually, it's what the program for leasing comes from, Nitswitz. So is that their brand?
If we decide to buy it, the lease money goes against the purchase.
Yeah, the lease programs, they don't offer that amount of lease towards purchase, but.
How much use of electric do we have?
Well, they got tamper, they got, you'd be surprised, trenching if they're running around or anything else, it just depends on what we.
They just got money and now the apartment's been paid for. Better get a breaker on it.
Well, we didn't, I didn't have that on there, that didn't come up later, but that should do that.
You might, rather than just going with that one because they have rented the lease, I wonder if first I would expect.
It's not a blame, just use it for snow.
Just put the number in there, but I think this will be a big conversation when we get there, don't you? But I think, you know, the idea of having one, do we rent one here at all now? We use the hole, I'm sure we.
Yeah, we haven't rented one at all. I talked about that, but again, it's another option.
Yeah.
I definitely, I said to you guys, but we need to probably rent one or something before we buy, so I just wanna see. So this was just, I just got this for the budget, got it in, I knew this is a program that's out there, so we just got this and.
So you can rent one from rental a lot for no more than you need it.
Say that again?
You can rent one from rental several times for no more than you need it.
Yeah. But here's the thing, this is that if this works, we might have, we might be able to de-emphasize one of the bigger holes. Dip not, get rid of it. The idea here is, is that we're in tighter spaces, tight spaces, and that's why this is being.
Well, that we can afford to get rid of the one of the hoes we got for the front-end loader portion of.
Yeah.
Unless we get an end loader back, there you go. Or a better snowplow truck. Still hard to haul it with a plow.
Anyway, you think this is a good idea, to try this out?
I think it's a good.
We need to talk about this more. The numbering ain't gonna hurt anything, it just seems awful high.
Right. Yeah, that's just.
Well, that's probably because they're trying to entice you into buying it.
But I mean, if you can buy a used one for 10 or 12, it's still cheaper to buy one and try it, you can resell it or trade it.
Can we buy one, do you think?
I know where there's one at, you can probably buy it for 10 or 12.
Really? Is it in good shape?
I was gonna say.
For that, I take it.
You look over there, we're at.
Look, there were about 80 new. Biggest thing, buying a used one is just to make sure it has all the safety features. You know, we don't wanna buy anything's modified or that. All this stuff that's been out there on construction site has a lot of disabled, so just make sure.
Well, here's the thing, this is that each one of these budgets contains $4,000 bucks, and you can talk about it a little bit after tonight. I don't know when you're gonna talk about it. You wanna do this here, you know?
We can move it to another line as far as purchase, or call it capital vehicle purchase if you wanna do that, heavy equipment purchase. That's a different line, that's not on there, we can add that or release, it's up to you.
So, I don't know if it's correct to ask now, but you've already got a truck in there, pickup, you got a mini, what, is there other things in here we need to?
As far as rolling stack, is that here now?
Yeah.
Okay. Really, one used truck and this thing.
I guess I don't know that we, did we save money buying used? I don't know. You buy new and you depreciate out over five or 10 years and get rid of it.
Well.
Get pretty good government discounts.
Get steak bit on the new.
Yeah. Maybe you can depreciate it out and then get rid of it.
That's what I'm saying, state discounts, you buy, like, regular pickup, state discount, you bring the top of the line pickup truck, $29,000, you're not gonna, it's being a person couldn't buy that truck for that price. So, I mean, that's like the DOT price, the state cheap, so I mean, buying a used, you're gonna get saved 10, 15,000.
But we can, you know, we'll get to that when we get to that part down the road, and we can get a little more detailed on it.
Right. For $16,000, how many times can you run a rental and get it?
A lot.
That's why I don't own one. And go rent one, need it. But. And if you get tired of it and break it, they gotta come fix it. Suppose you can leave it in there for rents and maybe use one. Go, you know, when you find a need for a smaller one, go rent it for a year, you know, I mean, rent it as you need it, and see what kind of usage we have, and decide whether you really wanna hold one. Rather than just leasing one for six months. You have to buy a trailer to haul it all.
Well, this one fit on our guest chair that we have, so.
Also gives you a year, you might actually stumble on them, used and that you just can't walk away, that might have everything you want.
Mayor, we, us public sector guys, our nonprofit, we don't get to depreciate. Not like you private sector guys.
We don't get government discounts.
We don't have to pay sales.
Then you get yours up front.
You don't have to pay sales.
I'll trade you, I'll take the government discount, no sales tax, depreciation, no I guess leave it in there, if we need to whittle something, we can whittle on that later.
Well, in context, each one of these budgets stands on their own, so. All right, we'll keep going. Misleaves contract work, we're keeping at it, what we did last year, actually, a little bit more than last year, we did it $26,000 the year before, so. Chemicals, Danny, we're starting $1,500 here.
Yeah, we dropped that one.
And why did we do that?
He's not using as much chemicals as before, requested change for the, you know, for the new construction, won't use those chemicals. He was actually just really using that line to subsidize other things, we just call it what it is.
We cut that down.
Right.
Okay.
So the telephone in the last one was $3,200, it's $3,500 missing.
It's long, it's further out the sewer plant.
It does seem like a lot of phone bill for each, but I'm just saying, it's $3,200 in the last.
Well, don't they have those headphone deals too?
That is part of this.
It's not part of that?
But the water was $3,200, and the sewer's $3,500, I guess, if that was a misprint, or I thought you said that was the same, or should be the same.
We can check on it, Mayor.
Yeah.
We'll check on it. I mean, if it should be absolutely the same.
I think there's a dedicated line down there for an alarm system. That may be why it's more.
Yeah, that's a good one.
They might have.
Call out some of the.
Mm-hmm. So we talked about misleaves contract wear, chemical sewer. We talked about that. Minor equipment, $10,000 bucks, that's what we had last year, we've already spent $7,200. We've been spending anywhere from $11,000 to $14,000 in prior years.
That's probably where some of that rental has been getting put, isn't it, in the past? Would the rental have fallen under that category?
One-timer type rentals, yeah. Office supplies, $500 bucks. Distribution supplies, $12,000. This one, this number's up. Why is that, Danny?
Increase, well, the omni-site changeover for the readers for the, it's our service we do for the, omni sites need upgrading that system, so that was about $2,500 there. And then, go back to the CBG grant, some stuff, if we go off of that, coming, you know, additional, we'll talk to that next week.
Postseason shipping, scientific supply, misleaves supplies, capital equipment improvement, we're showing nothing because this is all gonna be the big project. And we're not playing any, we're not building any more buildings.
That's the capital improvement problem, Jack.
Started out as that one. At any rate, you can see that we got the sewer plant total, then you get into the business of account distributions again, like we had the last time. It goes over to the general funds.
So the audit expense probably should carry out. Some of these numbers are, here, need to have numbers.
Yeah, we need to do those numbers. Again, there's a distribution number for all of them. Again, we're not talking huge dollars here, but these are distribution numbers. Transfers out of sewer, the only thing that we transfer out, and we still have to determine that, is what has to go into the project account for the water sewer project. I think that's it. The others are accounts that we gotta start pulling out of. But you see one big one here. That's proceeds from the debt. We're saying that we're gonna borrow $6,000, $6,500,000. We don't know if that's the right number.
Right.
But we would receive it in this account and then transfer it to the project account because it is a sewer project. At this point in time, that's a very conservative estimate. I'm hoping that we can get this number down to $5,000. We're pretty confident we can get at least $600,000 out of this thing based upon some other stuff that's going on here that's related to health processing and currency. Wouldn't that be nice though? No transfers in. Engineering fees, you see here right now, that's gonna be now piled up into the project account. That's why there's zeros here. And in fact, we're gonna try and move that stuff even this year from the standpoint of making sure that becomes granallicable, or not granallicable, but low-nallicable. Because we can, we can borrow money onto engineering stuff itself. If we want to. I'm still hopeful that we can put some serious money against it and downwind, but it reserves that opportunity. And the $6,500,000 is all inclusive. We are now into the yellow. You can see the electric plant total is zero. Interest earnings, we bumped it up to $6,000 based upon what was last year's expectation. It may very well be, again, that number might be adjusted even more based upon whether we make shifts in how we do the investments. Rents and royalties, we just plugged in the same type of number that we did last year. We haven't received anything yet, but it seems pretty regular that we will get that as a one-time payment, isn't it? Okay. Nothing for grants. Some of this, $1,646,000, this is Chris's man work that sometimes gets awfully diluted. Security lights, we got $10,005 here. This can be some LED change out, Danny. Penalties for electric, we're just basing upon prior experience.
What do we get penalized? Do we not have cash flow, do we not have late payments?
No, this is people paying their bills.
This is revenue. This is revenue.
Okay, all right. Yeah, okay. Late payments, okay, all right.
Sales tax revenue, we need to plug that number in, but I think it's gonna be about the same, about $80,000. You can see that seven months, we already got $42,000. Chris gave us his estimates on these things today as far as residential electric, he actually did it late last night. $1,525 for residential, $85,000 for rural sales, $1,225 for commercial. Energy revenue, electric, $200,000. Interdepartmental, $58,000.
What's energy revenue?
I think that that's stuff that we get on, isn't that savings on when we shave peak and stuff like that? All I know is that that's a number that Chris worked off of, and it's been very similar. Or is it, no, that's a, that's kind of a, that's a rebate through the property taxes, maybe that's what that is. I can't tell you, Mayor. All I can say is that we're running the same number about every year. I'll have to ask that question from Chris.
How's come Chris is doing the electric revenue budget?
I think it's rather up in the T notes a lot about electric costs and the revenues.
Like on the, on the security light revenue, we have 77 security lights out there that are being paid for, that's $8 a month, times, you know, 12 months, it's about $7,300. That thing revenue's gonna increase because our profit margin here, revenue, I guess would help out when we switch the old lights to the new LED, plus capture ones that are not, you know, that are out, that are not being paid for. They're like, a lot of them are in the alleys that, well, somebody's not being paid for, so capturing a lot of that is a pretty increased revenue. We find a lot of those when they just call and say they're out, and about to realize it's worth paying more beginning with, changing them ahead of time.
Top of page 56, miscellaneous revenues. Replicating on what we did last year, year before was higher, but the year before that was $11,000 again. Rembursements, we're not counting on anything, so we just zero, zero for refunds, zero for merchandise sales. Sales of assets, there's your, there's your sale of. Sales of assets, there's your, there's your sale of.
Bucket truck.
Yeah. At auction.
Bucket truck would have been on last year. Oh, this would be for future revenue.
We're talking about.
Oh, that's last, that is.
That is last year. That is last calendar, in last calendar year, but in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
You don't have anything. We don't have anything for this year. Okay, salaries, we went over that. All the stuff related to uniform allowance, medical reimbursement, all that. We're on to page fifty-seven. Training, well, it's just training, we got two thousand a year. We jumped, jumped training some in this area. Some of that might be related to, uh, that, that we're doing all, well, not only that, but we've got a lot of stuff going on related to, uh, dealing with the solar, dealing with the wind, dealing with alternative energy sources. Building repair and maintenance, keeping the same five thousand dollars whether we use it or not. I don't know, maybe we want to lower that one. You can see that over the last three years, we never really spend that much. We just kept it at five, I don't know. We know that in the future with the electric utility, we're gonna spend a lot of money. We've kicked around the idea of, of an amount that probably could be a two and a half million dollars that we need to do. It'll be supported, ostensibly revenue bonds, but the fact is that at this point in time, we can't tell you what that is. We're doing the CADMS thing, we're also having engineering review of this. We'll probably wind up amending that budget to reflect that kind of repair stuff. Whether we actually go out and borrow that money this year or not, this upcoming fiscal year remains to be seen, but, um, there'll be contingent on the plan that we're gonna have to put together. It might also be dependent upon some economic development opportunities too. Building grounds maintenance, number's the same. Vehicle gasoline, same. Vehicle maintenance, bumped it up some. What do we got additional for vehicle maintenance and electric? And we have something, something on the bucket truck that we had.
Yeah, this is a plant though.
Oh, this is a plant, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, we, we bought that Dodge twice.
Oh, yeah.
We still.
Talking about me here. That number is not the right number. If this is the plan, I could understand. You wanna keep it at two or you wanna drop that back to one?
We probably take it back to one, that's the plan.
All right. Equipment replacement and repair. We budgeted six thousand, six thousand, four thousand. We budgeted five thousand this year. We spent forty-five, twenty-one ninety-seven, and to date, twenty-seven seventy-nine this year. So that would suggest that we're running a lot higher than what, for seven months. Which could get us past four thousand if you double that. Put in five thousand, and it's five thousand, four thousand.
Five sounds.
Five is fine. Substation equipment maintenance repair. This is, again, is, is, you know, plugging in ten thousand dollars really doesn't save anything here. If we're really gonna do a major repair on, on the substation, we're gonna be talking about hundreds of thousands here probably.
We'll be pretty close to that ten thousand this year though.
In, in this calendar, in this fiscal year?
Yeah.
At fifty-four. But we're gonna be up to. Do you think that we'll, do we eat it next year?
No, hopefully this ten thousand will take care of it this year, but we're gonna, that's, we do bring for the future, this part would be now a project. We get into anything else after this ten thousand, we'll probably have to be a project.
All right. Utilities, electric plant. Drop that number dramatically to two thousand. Trying to figure out why that happened.
Kind of were at nine thousand, four hundred and fifteen.
Should that be twelve, not just two thousand?
Looks like it ought to be twelve thousand.
I think the one fell off of that.
It was twenty-two.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-two.
We got nine this year. Maybe it's twenty-two.
I think it's twenty-two.
Telephone's less here because it's inside. That, that makes sense, Mayor.
Well, it's hard to easily distribute it and then all the numbers are different.
Insurance, the same. We haven't paid the insurance yet, hasn't been billed to us.
We're not gonna need any engineering fees if we're looking at substations and stuff like that? Is that gonna be project?
The project cost.
It'll be project cost. There won't be any pre-engineering?
Yeah, we're doing a lot of free stuff right now, I think.
Free?
Free.
We're getting free. We're getting free.
Badness rise.
Free, 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 free.
Exactly. I issue. Miscellaneous contract work. I don't know. I, I mean, a thousand, a thousand. We spent twelve fifty even though we budgeted ten thousand this past year, but I don't know whether we need to do this. This is, some of this freestone again that we're getting from ISU really. We got CADMS. Is CADMS in this one? Maybe that's where the ten thousand's, that doesn't make sense.
I'm just wondering if they was planning on doing some more upgrades inside.
Did the plant?
The, the metering and all that was part of the project with the substation stuff and that's, uh, that's all part of this.
You know, switches and metering and all that go to digital instead of analog, but any of that was.
Part of the project.
That was all part of the project. I mean, that's all a big.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, last year, they might have been thinking they was gonna be, so that's why they put ten thousand in there. Oh, yeah.
Oh, we still can spend it too.
Yeah, we could. Like five, about five. Flip the switch tomorrow and she'll be gone. So you gotta leave nothing there then? That is zero?
Let's put five in there because that's what we were doing previously to, to the ten thousand. You see that we actually had fifty-five hundred, five thousand actual for the prior two years. Let's just put five in there. Minor equipment. Bumped it up to ten thousand. I think that's probably, might be some of the things we just talked about here. Where that is, because we got ten thousand in there. We spent five hundred bucks. Normally, we were spending about a thousand. I don't know whether we need to spend any more than ten thousand. Maybe we'd spend nothing and put it back, back that down to a thousand.
But over ten thousand, it's not real minor.
Well, it's, it's a one-time expenditure, is what I'm saying.
I love those tools.
Because we budgeted one thousand, one thousand, and then ten thousand. We spent fourteen hundred, we spent eleven hundred. Today, we've only spent five hundred dollars on this ten thousand dollar budget.
We'll trim it back down.
I'd say we put it to a thousand. Unless there's some reason you know, Danny?
Well, those headsets are ten thousand.
Oh, they wanted the head, there, there you go, the ten, yeah. That's what that is. Explain what that is.
Basically, we bought a pair this year already for sewer for jetting. Basically, it's the noise, they're the, they're quiet, so you can actually hear her talk, whoop-tooth everything. It's noise-canceling headsets and then you still talk between each other. So that's what they use those.
They use it in the engine room.
Yeah, they've been sharing those, everybody's.
How much are they?
Ten thousand a pair.
We bought a set already?
Yeah, they're worth it. Every dime, I think they, especially saving, like giving them treats, one person will be out, you know, something with the other person in the truck and vice versa and everything, it's just real.
Man on a jackhammer and.
Yep.
Yeah, really.
Yep, I'll be on the phone, have a conversation while they're digging.
We got, we got one set or two right now total.
One pair.
Just one pair.
But I guess used between pretty much everybody.
They're gonna remember proving that. First time I've ever heard about it.
Might have been in the year before.
Not if he was here when they did it.
Oh. Do we approve it this year or this fiscal year?
But it's already in, but I don't know if it's approved.
No.
I haven't, I've checked.
Office supply, scientific. Create city energy is a one-time thing, that's a zero house. Operating supply fuel oil, we put in nine thousand. There's a real question here about how much more we want to spend on fuel oil because we can run these things on natural gas, which is cheaper.
Right.
And, um.
First we have.
We have a lot now, I'm fine. We probably won't even need to spend this nine thousand next year. Maybe half of it maybe, Danny, if, if we look at it on a fill of the tank basis.
They don't call it on natural gas, do they?
You know, we don't normally.
But you gotta start them on diesel for an hour before you flip them.
Yeah.
My only other thought.
We've been running them a lot completely on diesel, that just tested them out.
My other thought was having a big supply of diesel fuel. If we ever had some kind of a disaster. We would have diesel fuel that we could use for other people, you know, vehicles or whatnot, we would have a supply of diesel fuel.
You mean for the community?
Well, yeah. I mean, I'm, that's, I know it's kinda out there thinking, but I'm just, if we had a disaster of some kind, we would have fuel for people, we could operate.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Tractors.
Are there other people? Are there other sources of it local or are we the only one?
Well, I mean, there's tanks, but I'm just saying, it would just be, it's just a thought. It would be something that we could offer if we had twenty or ten thousand gallon diesel fuel and needed them to clean up, but we couldn't get a tanker for a day or two, we'd have a supply.
Okay. Anyway, nine thousand, we probably won't even spend next year to fill it up. Operating supply lube oil. Danny and I talked about this today.
Moved it in the shop.
We moved that all to the shop budget.
Because they have two five gallon drums we've been buying, which we don't tend to be able to store correctly in overpacked and secondary containment, which in the shop, we have both oil, the same kind of oil, so they could just use that and pull from there if they need to.
But don't you still have to put some money in the budget for the dollar amount?
In the shop budget.
But why would I have shop budget for engine, the engine room? We can still have it in here, it'd be just stored in the shop. And use it. Because it's for the engines.
But we'd be using this for, is this lube oil we use for le, for vehicles too or no?
Yeah, I mean, it's the same oil, so I mean, just if you, what he's saying is just allocated under here, but.
Yeah, you're gonna have some under the shop and then you're also gonna have some.
I mean, we pay for phones out of the electric department, just imagine, why wouldn't we have?
I mean, you can't, I mean.
I mean, if you're gonna use five hundred or three thousand dollars worth of oil in the engines, why don't you have an expense here for the oil?
Right.
Where you store it, doesn't matter.
It'd be, if, if, if we look at it just as an equal basis, six hundred bucks though.
It just looks like we've had three thousand, three thousand, two thousand. We use twenty-five hundred and we use fifty-four hundred, so, I mean, I would probably put three thousand in there for lube oil.
All right.
So to keep books straight.
I'm, I'm just asking, so we're using twenty-five hundred one year and fifty-five hundred dollars for next year?
It's a spy on hand guy.
It's, it's probably spying, because look what we've spent for seven months already this year, six hundred bucks.
Probably a matter of we bought it one year and not another. So once the man, like if the year coming up, that's gonna need to be bought.
Yep.
Three thousand. Natural gas, we got four thousand. Same as what we did for current budgets. We spent six hundred and fifteen dollars in the last full fiscal year. We spent four thousand in fiscal year before that.
Yeah, we didn't bill ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we just got one of them meters.
I believe we have some budgets that year too.
Miscellaneous supplies, a thousand. Miscellaneous supplies, a thousand bucks. It's pretty much for the plant total. Okay, then you got the salaries for the distribution. We've already talked about that. Training travel on page fifty-nine at the top, three thousand dollars. Yeah, that number up a little bit. We've already spent two thousand in that account, so we're anticipating some more and keeping it at that level. Building repair and maintenance, three thousand dollars. Spent almost four thousand to date this year, although in the past years, we've been spending about a thousand.
Vehicle maintenance is up to almost six thousand.
Right, the year before it was a thousand fifty-eight.
We landed on trading off that Dodge bucket truck.
Got a lot of money to do now. I don't know. We just take land either of the vehicles. The plan or the.
This is the whole loan distribution. Bruce, could you put that thing on silent please?
I thought, I thought I had it, I'm sorry.
Or shut it off, thank you.
I will.
I don't mind you being here, but we don't need serenity.
No.
Vehicle maintenance, uh, equipment repair maintenance, same, effectively same type of number from two years ago, three years ago. We bumped it up from three thousand this past year as we think that it's gonna be C three thousand, probably not four. Again, these numbers are somewhat arbitrary, it could be three thousand, it could be four thousand. Distribution, electric distribution for utilities, a thousand dollars. Here's another internal telephone, six hundred bucks. Engineering fees, again, we're gonna reflect that into one of the projects, I think, function. Insurance is insurance. Legal fees, we've got five hundred dollars in here for legal fees.
That was more possibly up to the end tariff.
Oh, that's right, we got tariff.
I thought that was to five thousand, actually.
Yeah, that should be five thousand.
Well, don't we evenly distribute our legal fees throughout the?
This is gonna be very specific to, to the.
I know, don't we distribute our legal fees between all three things?
If there's a specific project, no.
Otherwise, it all comes out of general fund?
Well, it gets distributed.
No, it's distributed.
But if you have a very specific project, this tariff thing is specifically to, to the electric. It would be above and beyond that. That should be five thousand.
I just haven't seen it on any of these.
There's the same four thousand dollars for the leased equipment. Miscellaneous contract work. We've been trying to run it a hundred thousand. We've already, we didn't do much, uh, the last fiscal year, the fiscal year before that, we did almost a hundred thousand. We've already done seventy-five thousand this year, we still got some time to go. But we're just keeping the, that contract worth at a hundred. Street lining.
Miscellaneous contract work, no thing, so I've been watching news again, BBNG, we were out in California, just sued over the wildfires. That was due to, uh, they had to trim trees on lines. So that's another thing to be coming down through the IUB and everything else, watching that, so, and we've been doing that readily. That, we spend fifty grand replacing the poles, plus we spend about, I think it's fifteen thousand a year trimming trees, so that's one thing we might look at increasing.
Yeah, but we're, but we're, we're gonna be taking down a lot of trees this year.
Right, so that, so.
Fifty thousand dollars worth of dead ashes. Street lining, we've been running at twenty thousand each. This does not count the tree, street lining program that we were talking about for this courthouse square. That will be a special project, it'll be TIF probably, and it'll be in excess of two hundred thousand, maybe in excess of three hundred thousand dollars.
We need to do some street lighting since we.
Yeah, so is this gonna be getting rid of the flash and strobe street lights? Not in this light, I have, it's gonna be a special project.
No, this here is for normal streets.
We have, I, I thought you were just referring to strobe.
No, there's a lot of flash and strobe ones around this town.
That's where this would be coming out of.
And the inner block lighting and.
Right.
Getting the street lights put back in, but it took.
And you can take down the inner block lighting in the two hundred block of. And you can take down the inner block lighting in the two hundred block of North Street. You can take it down. Take it away. We don't need to land airplanes on our street. That's how bright it is.
Of course, I know, but you can't see your nose on Arkansas.
Take it up to Arkansas, bring it up to Arkansas. They can have mine. I'm the only house in the street for crying out loud. Minor equipment, we bumped that. Twelve thousand for the upcoming year. What do you got there Danny?
Definitely going into upgrading our GIS locator. And of course headsets there as well.
And another, one other set of ten thousand here. So we're buying two of these headsets, one electric, one in here. Office supplies, four hundred. Distribution supplies. Why twenty thousand Danny? Bottom of fifty-nine.
At the point we need to buy poles right now, so we're going to need to pull a load of poles and just.
That's what the hundred, that's what the hundred and fifty thousand is all about for this year. I'm at bottom of fifty-nine. Bottom of fifty-nine. Distribution supplies.
Well, the reason we're at a hundred and fifty is for, yeah, for the AMI.
We had fifty and fifty the years before that, but we were spending forty-eight and thirty-six. You don't think we're going to have much because it's not meters, right?
Right.
Postage, scientific supply, interconnect refunds. You can see that we're spending a lot less, our budget a lot less. Energy efficiency program, ten thousand bumping that one up. We budgeted. This is one of those programs Chris is advocating, but we can't get people to go into it. Last year we only budgeted two thousand, but we actually got people to do thirty-five hundred, so we brought it up to ten thousand. Christmas lights, we've got zero on it. Not buying any more Christmas lights. Miscellaneous supplies, four thousand. Capital equipment, nothing.
Probably see those Christmas lights coming in Main Street. I think I heard somebody say that, go. Put some more Christmas lights in the square.
The next two pages are the administrative distributions. The only one here is the utility sales tax expense. That'll be a plug number because it's a passer. Probably put eighty thousand in it.
Uniform expense. Right, it's a lot more.
This is the year that we buy coats and shoes Danny?
It's zero, but is this for the in, is this the office?
Right, that's the office people. Yeah, that one on the next page, sixty-one, we need to add those numbers again.
We have to add all that, but you can see that these are. This, this again, is the same situation with all, we can get those in.
They'd like to go to Scrubs.
They may want you to wash them for them.
We might, obviously, flame retardant in the office too. Be warmer.
Would it?
Oh God.
They would come well.
We have on page sixty-two, purchase power. This is a number that, right now we're running right at a million seven fifty. But I don't want to plug that number in until I talk more with Chris, because I don't know whether we need to look at that from. But simply solar is going to be in here. So that number we're going to have to bring back to you. And transfers out for electric, again, this is going to be a number that's going to be highly contingent upon everything else in general. You can see that the transfers out for electric this year is far below what we have budgeted for. And I have very little expectation that we're going to be transferring out. Any more this year. So you can see that the electric total down here, this is two million four twenty-four. That's a huge number compared to what we've had in the past. That's because we don't have the purchase power number.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
If you take a million seven fifty out, if that's the number, you can see that all of a sudden reality comes back. But we'll get that number for you. Any other questions about electric? Ready for the last? This is a thin one. We're actually starting this on the next page, because that's how we have to do the photocopying here, and that is for the gas. Interest eight thousand, processing transfers, nothing. Here's the penalties again, people don't pay the bill. Connection charges, this is our cost that we charge people. Sales tax for gas, residential gas, Chris put these numbers together, rural for gas, commercial for gas, industrial for gas, interdepartmental gas. This lady's revenues is sixty-five hundred based upon what we have prior experience. No project share reimbursements, refunds, merchandise sales, again, not. Any comments about the revenues?
Well, I guess. That's all it means.
Probably, you know what, I mean, obviously, I just wonder if this winter is going to bring us in more money, because this has been colder than the last few.
You need to talk about Chris about putting these numbers together. Chris and I talked quite a bit on, you know, how do we increase revenues and decrease costs? We're always constantly talking about, you know, different things and that stuff. So, you know, so we're in tune when he's putting, you know, he puts the numbers together, but then we also talk about, hey, how can we decrease here and how we put that there? So we're constantly, and we're with Todd or whoever it is in that division, you know, what's, you know, that's when we track down some issues like the indexes and all that stuff. But we got, because we're looking for line loss, we're looking for, same thing with gas loss, we're buying more than we're charging, you know, and that kind of stuff. So we're trying to put that together, and that's hopefully how we're trying to reflect this. So it's not, it's, you know, someone's educated guess, but someone, we really got some numbers.
Gas plant total, this is almost an anachronism. We still cover a little bit, but realistically, this is. Back in the old days type of process. Get down to the salaries of gas distribution and all that, we'll go through that. Page seventy. Down to building maintenance, twenty-five hundred, training and travel, five thousand. There's a lot of training and travel with gas. Lot of requirements. And we've had to bump them up because there's more, more requirements now.
Yeah, this, this year now, we have to go through a new system. They went to an online, basically training database system, and so every operator or any, any operator, any nine-one-one dispatcher, any of those are required to technically be in that system now for tracking. And so basically to be in that system, it's just a hundred and fifty dollars a year. Gas operators, seven hundred and fifty dollars a year just to be in that. And then, then you pay for additional skills that you have to have certified in. So there's just going to go up a little bit. What we're trying to do is put, push off some of that, because you don't have to actually go into that system until you're, until you expire. They have someone on a one-year or a three-year window. So it takes place this year, this coming year, but we don't have to jump in until we expire to get on board, so.
Vehicle maintenance, nominal amount. Equipment repair maintenance, again, a nominal amount. Gas distribution utilities, same as before, telephone, this one's less. Insurance, covered in existing cost. They used to say, this, this, this number could be forty-five hundred, but, you know, I, that could probably make it forty-five hundred.
Is that a one-time? Is that a one-pay?
Yeah, it's a one deal.
That's happened yet?
We just had to happen. Here's your lease again. Four thousand dollars. This lady's contract work, we got a hundred thousand dollars. This is a project that we're going to contract for and it's the start of replacing. Three of nine wa, gas.
Steel mains.
Steel mains.
Yeah, we have nine steel mains that go underneath the highway. Right now we have two of them shut off, you know, one in Greenery Lane and one by East there. So the next one, the higher priority, next one probably used by a ton of Casey's. So roughly about twenty-five, thirty grand a piece to replace those. So we're going to have some more firm numbers. Actually have USD and SSI possibly coming next week against more firm numbers, but basically if we look at, you know, nine of them, three a year for three years. And we're getting to a point where we have to replace it because it's affecting our lube and pressure because now we can't just keep disconnecting them, so.
These things were all installed at the same time and they're beginning to all fail at the same time. So we're just going to bite the bullet and.
Got it.
Going to do it. We're going to do it over a three-year period. Don't want to disrupt traffic way too much. Hopefully we can bore a lot of this.
Can't slide it.
Plastic pipe.
But there's requirements for, for, if we do that, it's better just to bore.
Maybe you could cut it off back there.
We tried that.
If you can't. You got to go too small, then you cut your flow down.
Pressure.
Anyway.
Slide walking forward.
Anyway, this, this is just a little sneaky one, but it's a hundred thousand dollars for three years. That's, that's just the way that goes. Minor equipment, office supplies, distribution supplies, Danny, a hundred thousand dollars, we're actually down on this from the current budget of a hundred and thirty.
Why did that take such a big jump last year?
I was going to answer this.
Why didn't it go down much?
And that also related to the gas main thing too, or no?
Yeah. Possibly, new services.
We got one-two-eight-zero there?
Might be.
You know, we're buying the pipe and all that stuff, because I don't know what gas pipe costs.
Yeah, I stopped that much.
I'm going to circle that and come back to it.
Yeah, I'll each come back in a way.
We'll check that one out.
I wonder if we have meters or something.
I need to work on that circle, we're not done with all one. Twenty-six. Six-five-oh-seven. Okay, page seventy-one. We're down to capital equipment improvement, which is nothing. I don't know if the hundred thousand is supposed to be there.
Oh, it should be.
Do we have capital equipment improvement from this, or no? I mean, you saw that we budgeted five thousand, we didn't spend that. Now get us in that big gas project. Salaries, we've already talked about, train and travel, got to fill in that line, those lines there, but it's going to be four thousand bucks. Page seventy-two. We've got to fill in most of it. You can see that these are just small operational accounts, plus the utility sales tax expense, we'll get up, do for any one of them. We don't show anything for capital equipment improvement on the distribution number either. I think that one-twenty that you saw here, last year's budget, I think that was eight of my house. At thirty for this year, I think that was the, because we knew that we'd need some more. We're probably still going to have to come up with a little bit more money for A M I. But we're close. Page seventy-three.
Thermostat revenue, four thousand.
I'll point out something on page seventy-three here. Remember we were losing money against, we were losing money against the debt, the revenue and expenditures. Now, I know that we still have some of those numbers to fill in, but they're not going to be material difference. The fact that matters is that right now you can see that that three forty-four, nine seventy-seven versus that three forty-two, five fifty-five of two years ago is about equal. That means that our little bit of a gas rate increase probably is going to offset our costs. Now, there is another issue out there, as we kind of all know, is that we got some gas meters that are not indexing correctly, and as a result, we found. Let's, case of the schools, fifteen thousand bucks.
Or thirty.
Thirty, fifteen over two, each of two years, right? Fifteen and fifteen.
Overcharged or undercharged?
Under.
Overcharged.
So. Well, we've just discovered it, we're going to be talking. That there'll be nice citizens and recognize it, but the fact is, is that. We're, we're concerned about whether this is going to be impacting any of, particularly commercial and industrial users, where the big numbers are. But we're finding these things out as we go through the AMI process and checking it out. So we're going through a discovery, but it might be that our revenues were down a little bit because of it. I'm going to say a little bit. We talked about thirty thousand dollars. That seems like a lot of money, but over what we're charging overall in gas is percentage point, but.
Like there's something just one meter.
It's not just one meter. We're finding out, the, the number itself is problematic, and as a result, maybe this hundred thousand dollars that we're, we put in here that we're trying to call a question to, we can actually target that to our meter replacement if we have to. So we have to do a little bit of, but this is something we're just discovering here in the last, about a week, ten days from here, something like that. With that being said.
It's our thermostat revenue.
Yeah, we're just.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand for smart thermostats.
Sorry, this is, we're going to relabel that. We're relabeling that, that is your.
Is that another Chris number?
No, that, well, this is legit. This, this is the on-bill financing. This is where we're going to go in and fix houses. And how this works is that we have to have a line of credit.
Yeah.
And that line of credit will actually go out there and we will do this and we will get paid back, but we have to advance the fund. This is the, the grub statement for it. This, this project takes off, we expect that this number will carry us through to the end of the calendar year. If it doesn't take off, then we won't be spending that kind of money. If it takes off, I mean, we get it through the end of the, our calendar year without no financing. We see that this thing needs to have more money put into it, then we'll get a line of credit that extends me on that amount. Optimistically, very optimistically, this project could exceed three million dollars. But we got to find out whether we have the project or not, and it's going to take a lot of voluntary acceptance. We still have to get the program off the ground, stuff that Chris is working on. But we now are recognizing that one of the things that has we've done here is that we're going to have to have potentially some legislation, probably not. There are other cities doing this in Iowa. But we have a new state auditor too, so we have to get some. At any rate. That's what that big number is. That's going to be a financing issue. It's not going to come out of the rate pairs. Anything else? Next time, general fund. Some of the general fund budgets are real simple. Police chief and I did his budget this afternoon for expenditures in the space of about twenty minutes. And that required us calling Sabrina out of her office three different times, so that takes some time. I, I'm guessing that we're going to be spending somewhere between an hour and a half and two and a half hours.
Yes, sir. Are we open for questions to the council on their budget? Here's. I'm pretty excited about the Bloomfield newspaper about the pre-street projects. They are going to do a few. They are gonna do a few streets that was published in the paper. It's exciting. Uh, are they gonna leave them the same width they are going to the hospital?
That's the expectation.
Your what?
That's the expectation.
Yeah, and then they're doing the bridge at Hastings. Are they going on up to the highway?
The bridge at Hastings.
We're not East Street, no, we're not planning on going clear to the highway.
Just remove, just remove the bridge, put it in the car.
Well, they do. Any street on the south side of the bridge.
We have, we're gonna do some, but we don't know how far yet.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
I thought we was going to.
I'll probably have numbers for you next council meeting.
We took the entrance to.
We talked about maybe up to the entrance of South Duke.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a big number.
Yeah.
Depends on how much you wanna spend on it.
And our construction person that got it said that that probably should set, what, six months to a year?
Cause we're not, not just, just for the culvert.
We're not doing any.
Before you put anything over the.
Before you.
Over the top of that.
Paying over the culvert, I'd, I'd let it sit a year.
Probably let it sit a year, and then we'll decide how far we go with it.
The other thing is West Street that goes by Priesters. That two-block it goes over to what I call the Bellknap Road.
North Street.
You're talking about North Street.
North Street.
That is West Street.
Goes to West.
Yeah.
I would ask the council not to do that, because the chuckles there, they're so big that we, I sell a lot of suspension work. Please don't fix that street, take your money.
It might be worth a while, though, after we do the.
The bridge replacement.
Unbelievable, that, to actually tear this.
You want me to play you?
Hot old asphalt up.
Come on, Al.
And re-gravel it.
Darren, Darren, that's. I, I think that there, there's a landing spot.
It'll be a good culvert.
That we need to do. How far, I don't know, but in the short term, fill in with gravel, yeah.
Well, you need to, need to tear out the, the ass, what little asphalt chunks there is and gravel it all.
What Darren's saying there comes from his father, who was in the construction business of culverts, been passed down to Darren. And absolutely positively, what Darren's saying is correct. Let it set.
We're going to do North Street, the street project.
That goes by.
The one that's gonna cause you to go broke.
I'm telling you, that street's.
Take money from you now.
Right, Paul. I hit one of my crew. I swear it was that deep, and I thought it was gonna roll.
But if you put a million dollars into the sewer project, we might consider your.
I, I'll tell you what, I am absolutely thrilled that they're gonna do some construction on these concrete streets and not blacktop them. The only thing I'd ask is, please, don't make them skinnier.
No. No expectation to do that. We're trying to get as much, uh, on a linear foot basis as possible by just replicating ones there.
If you get a full-size vehicle like the rest of us drive around the town, you wouldn't notice them holes quite so bad either. But you've got twenty-inch tires instead of twelve-inch tires. We still gotta get a ten-foot easement up there for the culvert.
Yeah, we need ten-foot easements, so don't trash them too.
No, I'm telling you.
I still don't make this rig legal to drive in town.
I gotta hay my cattle somewhere.
If you had cattle, then I would understand that.
Cattle or cats.
Hugo Drew will be.
Second.
That was clear. Good for John. You want us all to say aye at the end of the time?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
You know, you got, I overheard you talking about the insurance companies, or what you charged me to come to Pipers to put a fire out now that he's here.